All right. Right to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for August the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. If you would please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. God, we thank you for your many blessings. We continue to ask your guidance and blessings upon our school system. We pray that you continue to bless our students and staff. And then we all be thank you for a successful first day. We continue to give you thanks for a successfully twenty-three, twenty-four school year. These blessings we ask in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, citizens address the board. No one. After all that. Okay. Number four, approval of our work session agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right. I'll turn it over to Dr. Williams for items of discussion.
Mr. McNair. He's actually gonna share a little bit about our spring testing. Just a little bit because in September, we are gonna ask the principals to come and share with you specifically for their school and then their action plan for improving their scores.
Mine will be more or less an overview and I feel a little overdressed with the guys with their golf shirt. My wife told me it was the first day at school, so I had to put the pipe back.
You're good.
I'm happy to hear you do what she tells you to. That'll work for you, stay with it.
But thirty-one years, you learned.
Woo-hoo.
So, yeah, it works. All right, real quick, what I want you guys, like Dr. Williams said, when the principals or their assistants come in, they're gonna be placing a lot of emphasis on last year's scores versus this year's scores. And they're gonna be looking at the domain areas to where we need to improve. So, just kinda looking forward to September, these are the things that we're gonna focus on. It's not about how do we do compared to last year, but what are we planning to do to increase our scores or our student performance in the upcoming school year? So, the focus will be definitely on that. I started with third grade at Todd Grant and I'm gonna go down the list. And the two places I want you to take or pay more attention to is the upper right-hand corner where it talks about percentage of students proficient. That's levels three and four. Three is proficient and four is distinguished. If you look at our English Language Arts for our elementary schools, you can see where our system was ahead of the RISA and the state by a couple of points. I think we were at forty-one percent and the state was at thirty-nine and the RISA was at thirty-six. So, there was definitely some improvement in those areas for us. Look at the mathematics. We were a little bit below the RISA and the state. And that, in, I think in our systems goals is one of our targeted areas when we're looking at our math, and that is across the board. When I talk to people around the district, District fifteen, one of the things that they're saying that they're challenged with is the math. And of course, when we start getting our, getting things rolling with our math, things change. So, we have new math standards coming in this year to address some of the challenges and some of the things that the state has decided. These are things that kids need to know. So, again, that's gonna impact us on, on some level. So, we're waiting to see what that rollout is gonna be. In addition to that, there is gonna be a sort of a waiver for our school system statewide because of the math standards transitioning in. So, we won't have, especially at the high school level with our algebra coming in and things like that, there's gonna be somewhat of a transition as they get all the standards up and running for the new school year. English Language Arts for our fourth grade, again, it's not really a great performance there. You can see across the state, they were about thirty-six percent. We were about four point, percentage points below that, right ahead of the district, I mean, the RISA, just by a point. So, again, not anything to scream and yell about. We, we are working hard with our fourth graders because when they go to fifth grade, it becomes a transition year for them before they move on to middle school. So, we're really trying to make sure our fourth graders are, are improving. Look at the fifth grade, fourth grade for mathematics. Again, everyone's kinda right there together, around forty-three percent for our, our system, forty-four for the RISA and forty-six for the state, I think it is, I can see from here. The big thing that I, I wanted to share with you guys is that when I started looking at all the data for the district and the, all the fifteen counties or so that are in our southeast region, we're, we're kind of right there in the middle. And, and I can remember when I first got here, we were at the bottom or like one or two at the bottom. And we gradually moved up. Lots of room for improvement and I think we're gonna get there at some point with all the initiatives that we have in place. But when you look at those scores and seeing where we are, especially with the fourth grade mathematics, you can see where we're not too far off where most of the districts are and across the state as far as our percentages are concerned. Okay, looking at fifth grade, again, kinda right there again, our system is really below the RISA and, and it's, and it's about six or seven points below the state. But we are working hard, like I said, in, in, in the English Language Arts, really with the focus on that third grade. I think with this, this new dyslexia initiative and the law that has been passed, there's gonna be a targeted interest on trying to identify kids who are having reading difficulty early on. And so, again, the focus will be on trying to make sure we're able to identify them, not wait till they get to third grade and realize that they're having reading difficulty. So, they struggle from that point on, but to kinda hit them in kindergarten and move from there. Okay, we move on to fifth grade math. A struggle there and this is something I've heard from the middle school teachers when they get the fifth graders up. Seems like there's a lot more remediation that's taking place with the fifth grade. And of course, as they move up the grades, the math becomes a little bit more difficult. And so, we're trying to make sure that we're trying to get our students where they need to be there. Any questions about our elementary schools, their scores? Again, the principals are gonna come out and really do the comparison next time they come up and talk about the test scores and look at a plan for action to get us above the state and really get more kids into level three and four. And then science was the final. Our kids typically state, you know, they usually perform right around the state averages with that. Again, it's about the same, thirty-four percent. The state is at about forty percent, so not too far off, but at the same time, kids have more, we're trying to get them more exposure to the sciences mainly because of the vocabulary and the things that they need to learn as they move into the middle school grades. And we're gonna go real quick on to McIntosh Middle. Again, we were right there with the state when it came to our English Language Arts at the sixth grade, not too far behind the state, but at the same time, above our RISA. Mathematics, again, still a struggle in our district, really a focus of our initiatives moving forward. We're gonna be talking a lot to our principals about what are we gonna do to help remediate and get our kids where they need to go for the year. Seventh grade, as you can see, we are above the state average and the RISA average, about five points. So, we're, we're, we're really moving along in that. And it's really interesting because it really, a lot of times, it depends on the groups of kids that go, that move up. So, if you look at these seventh graders from last year, the sixth grade ELAs were higher than the RISA and the state. So, it's really kinda tracking that kid in that grade level from year to year. Mathematics, same way, got forty-two percent with our mathematics seventh grade. And RISA, we were above them at thirty-one and the state at thirty-five. So, lots of progress with our seventh graders who are gonna be our eighth graders this year. So, again, we're looking for this, this group to really transition into high school, a lot more success. English Language Arts, about right there where the state is, a little bit above, below the RISA by a point or so, I think we're right there with them with the English Language Arts. Mathematics, again, if you looked at it across the board, we're below the state and the RISA pretty much across all grade levels except that seventh grade. And this is where the success, in my opinion, comes from. I don't really call out teachers, but I think this is Mrs. Spanish, algebra, eighth grade algebra class. We had over sixty percent, almost sixty percent of our kids score basically in the eighth grade at level three or four. So, these are our eighth graders going up to the high school where they actually scored a lot higher. And if you see our system, that talks about the school system, meaning our high school, current high school. So, overall, it brought the average down, but looking at those, I think it was twenty-two students, out of those twenty-two students, almost sixty percent of them had, were in level three or four, so that's a good sign. Any questions about our middle schoolers? And then in science, pretty much the same way, it's, it's science and those type of classes are really about the vocabulary. It's a reading class, but it's a little bit more difficult because it's reading. We were above the state and the RISA when it came to our, our eighth grade math last year. So, we're looking for big things with our ninth grade, looking for a lot of good things for our students that will be transitioning to high school this year for the first time. And I see it being pretty competitive for our, our class ranking as we move forward over the next three years. We got a bunch of kids, out of those twenty-one, twenty-two kids that are gonna be completely top honors, so that's gonna be a, a good thing for us. All right, and then finally, social studies, again, it's a reading class about the vocabulary and history. So, again, it's really keeping the kids engaged in this area, a little bit below the, the state and the RISA. I'm not sure what's going on with, with the instruction with that particular class, but we will find out something as we move forward about why we're not, why we're ten points behind in the state average, state average percentages. And then finally, with the high school, excuse me. These are our American Lit and Composition. Again, we're below where we need to be as far as our recent. This is gonna be pretty interesting to see what we're gonna do as far as when we talk to our principals prior to our September meeting, their plan of action for getting us where we need to. We're at twenty-three percent as, as far as those students that are three and four, and the state average is about forty percent. So, we have a lot of work to do in that area.
A good question for, for us to consider is how many took it at college and how many took it on campus?
Yeah, yeah, that is true, that is true. Again, it's, it's really just a continuation. One of the things that's happening with the state, there's been new legislation that's come down that basically allows our districts now to decide on whether we wanna take a ten percent as far as their final grade. So, their final grades statewide, they give us an opportunity to let it count for ten percent of their final grade, but our district has decided to keep it at twenty percent, which is what we had before. And after talking to Dr. Williams, we both agree that it should be twenty percent across the board for all classes because sometimes different classes give different weights. But for fairness purposes at the high school, we just felt like it should be twenty percent. And then biology, again, a little bit below, way below the state average. But again, our kids are, are moving in the right direction. I think when the principals come in, you'll, they'll be able to show you some of the growth that has happened over the period of time with our content areas. But we are still below the RISA, right there in the middle for the most part, but not where we need to be. Then finally, US history, which was a surprise to me because we were a lot higher with our US history. For some reason, we were down to twenty-seven percent and the RISA was up at about forty percent. So, that kinda gives you a brief overview of where we are with our G-Mass. And when the principals come in, it'll be a little bit more in-depth and give you an opportunity to ask more specific questions about things that they're doing to help improve in that area. Any questions for me about our testing? G-Mass?
He said this will be next month though.
Yeah, next month, it'll be a lot more detail. Come for the September work session. There is a quick statement that friends at Coastal Community Health wanted to inform you guys. Governor Kemp did do a proclamation and he wanted to let everyone know that this week, August the sixth through the twelfth is Community Health Center Week. So, I wanted to let everyone know that our community health centers are important to our community. We do have them here and so that we wanna make sure we're maintaining that partnership with them as we move forward. So, if you guys remember Dr. Chandler, he was up at the state.
Yeah.
When they had the proclamation with the governor signing. And so, at some point, he'll come down and talk to us again about what's going on with our community health. Any other questions or questions for me before I have a seat?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Skills USA, and I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Todd is asking a couple of our middle school students to participate this year to try to build some interest there and get a middle school chapter. But he kinda wanna do it on a trial basis. So, he took, he asked, invited a couple of students that had siblings at the high school already. So, they will be participating in some middle school competitions. Next, organizational effectiveness, this is our big one this month. Our annual policy reviews and trainings, you know, we didn't do that during pre-planning. That is going out, Rusty, tonight or tomorrow. We have it now where we can just send that out and like in two weeks, I will run a report and I'll know who's done it and who hasn't done it. So, it's gonna be much easier for them. The Perry weather system, I know that Coach Warren was, was telling somebody, was it you? He was telling Miss Bregman about this at the night out, National Night Out. He said, well, this is neat, y'all paid for it. And I said, no, they didn't, we got that with a grant. So, this is, what we did, we put this in our security grant and it's going to be, it's just a piece of, the, the equipment is kinda minor and it goes on the press box, but it gives us so much. So, it will give him not only the lightning and the, the heat index and all that, but when it's hurricane season, we will have access to our own meteorologists to help us make those decisions about school closings and, you know, canceling after-school events and all that kinda stuff. But we, we didn't know if the security grant would pay for it, but it did, so we will have that for the next five years?
Well, that's awesome.
Five years, so we were excited.
So, just let you know of lightning in the area and all that?
It sounded really neat. He said.
He's been going through training, so.
Yeah, he was trying to show me on his phone and then it kicked him out. But there was one thing he said that I thought was really good, is like if they're on the field practicing, you know how like, well, my phone will because I have, I think, WTOC and if like lightning is detected in your area? He said that will come over the PA system if they happen to be out practicing and even if it's twelve miles, fifteen miles, however many miles away, it'll notify and it'll go across the PA system. So, they'll have that early warning to go ahead in and it was really neat. But yeah, he was like, look what y'all bought. And I was like, okay.
Cause I don't know what you're talking about.
But it sounded like really.
It's gonna be good when we all learn how to use it. I think there's ten of us that will have access, big access to it, and then anybody else, there's, I think, I'm not sure if there's even a limit on how many can have widgets is what they're called, so.
We can put a thing on our website and show that, well, I've been told, I'm waiting for more information. And so, if you can explain that, just put on our website, this is the GHTA weather station.
So, we're excited about it. He had sent it to me earlier and the guy talked us through it and he says he thinks this is gonna become like something that, you know, GHSA is probably gonna require us to have. So, if we're just ahead of the game, we're ahead of the game, so. We're excited about it. I put the dress code policy on here for us to do the official thirty-day review. And then discussion of minutes. Anybody hope, did anybody have a discussion?
If there's anything wrong, then let Ms. Lane or Dr. Williams know and we'll make those changes before next week.
Ms. Lane had to try to decipher my minute takings. All right, then next we have Ms. Franklin. It's tax time.
Tax time, yeah. Late last week, so I wanted to put some files up just to give you all some perspective and so y'all can make a decision as to which way we want to go. Rusty, if you would pull up the millage sixteen point nine seventy-two file. Yes, I kinda worked up three scenarios for you all to look at. Yeah, so what I did on this, I, I plugged all the numbers into the file here, Digest and History. And I calculated a, at the current rate of the sixteen point nine seven-two, I calculated a levy at our collection rate that we budgeted, the ninety-three percent collection rate, plus the commission at some prior year collection to give you what anticipated collections would be if we left the millage rate as it was. And as you can see, it would be about nine point three million. We budgeted eight point one million for tax revenue for this fiscal year. That would give us a million two over what we actually budgeted for revenue for this year. I gave you another scenario. Rusty, if you would pull up the sixteen point two, rolling it back to sixteen point two, save information. It would, at the ninety-three percent collection rate, it would give us eight point nine million against our eight point one million budgeted for an excess of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand. Keep in mind, when we budgeted our general fund budget this year, we did budget a deficit of over six hundred thousand, so this would more than cover the deficit so we wouldn't have to dip into our fund balance, you know, if we used up all of our expenditure budget. And then I did one more scenario at just sixty, just an even sixty mils, same thing. It would generate eight point eight million, which is seven hundred, roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand over what we budgeted. Now, I wanna show you the PT thirty-two calculations for each one of these same scenarios. Rusty, if you would pull up the PT thirty-two for the sixteen point nine seventy-two. So, the PT thirty-two calculates a rollback rate of, can you scroll it down just a little bit? Of fifteen point five four four. Scroll it down just a little bit more. And so, if we went at the full, without rolling back at all, what we would have to advertise is this rate, the, our, our rate over the rollback rate, we would have to advertise a nine percent tax increase. Okay, the next one would be at the sixteen point two scenario. Of course, it would be the same rollback rate. And if we went with the sixteen point two, we would have to advertise a tax increase of four point two-two percent over the rollback rate. And then finally, the sixteen point oh. We would have to advertise a two point nine three percent tax increase over the rollback rate. And then finally, the last thing that I have is the FLPA calculation. That's just an additional worksheet and I estimate that that would generate roughly ninety-one to ninety-six thousand dollars, which we budgeted ninety thousand dollars for that. So, that's pretty well in line with what we budgeted. So, we have to make a decision as to what, if we're rolling back at all, do we want to pick one of those scenarios or stay where we're at for one more year and see how things go?
And then we also have to decide when we're gonna have the public hearings.
Can you pull back up the, the sixteen point two? Was it sixteen point two?
And then we can decide today, I can work up all the paperwork tomorrow and get it to Catherine. We could actually schedule our first meeting for next Thursday if we can get it all in the paper this week. You can't, we can't.
I already tried.
We can do it for next Wednesday.
Gives us another week.
That just pushed the set, yeah.
We go to the other, the sixteen point oh, I think it was sixteen point oh.
And you guys remember, you can advertise, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine, I was just listening.
Remember, you can advertise at the current rate with the full rollback and you can adopt any rate lower than that. That's the other thing, you know, better safe than sorry, you can adopt at that sixteen point nine seventy-two. Now, all the forms that go into paper are gonna look like a big tax increase.
Exactly.
You can adopt any millage rate lower than that once you hold those three hearings and advertise. You don't have to go all the way back to the rollback rate.
So, it's not set in stone.
When we say, when we decide tonight, okay. I like that scenario.
Well, I just personally think we need to roll back. Now, the amount, I don't know, but I feel like we do need to roll back some. That's just me personally.
Yeah, that million three excess looks like a lot to the tax payer.
It does.
Yeah, it does.
Right.
Exactly.
We've had a ton of growth. Kinda get it back in COVID, but.
What's that? I didn't.
Say this is the third year in a row.
Right.
So, that's where it starts, that's where you start to hit a wrinkle, I think.
I mean, Ms. Tammy, I hate to put you on the spot here, but what if we were to roll back to the sixteen two? I mean, you, you comfortable with that?
That number definitely gives us, still gives us a little wiggle room.
Right.
Knowing that we have a deficit, you know, general fund budget, you know, that we'll have to eat into our fund balance. I'm just, I'm worried about, you know, not maintaining that and we've got a nice healthy fund balance and we don't wanna start going the other way.
Right.
You know, the economy's still so uncertain.
Yes.
It is.
But that definitely gives us a little wiggle room, you know, to cover that deficit fund balance.
Well, I mean, we can roll it back and if it don't work.
Well, you don't have to decide, I mean, next week you can make the decision. I mean, y'all could look at this, you know, over the week and have some discussion.
That's getting it kinda tight to get it in the paper for her, though, that's the only thing I was.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, but she said she can't do it next week anyway.
When do you need it? Okay. So, we can't wait to.
And that's pushing it in it.
By Friday?
Yeah. I mean, I don't see where we can't.
In a perfect world, Friday.
Roll it back to sixteen point two. And then we still advertise it that way.
Yeah.
Like you say, you're comfortable with that, so.
I agree with that.
Why not try?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
So.
That's why she worked up three different scenarios.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm good with the sixteen point two.
I'm good.
With those exemptions, man. Those exemptions, our exemptions. Lot of retirees here.
Do we have to?
It hits the dishwasher.
We need a, a motion to vote?
Not if she's putting it in the paper. We need to go ahead and get it fixed, don't we?
You can just give her guidance if you want to now, I mean.
And then we can vote on it. That way, we'll have all the documents to vote on.
That works, that works, okay. I think we're all good with that.
Not as staggering a number under that. You know, there was a bill introduced this year to eliminate that. And it dropped in the House and there were some pretty heavy names behind it. And basically, the bill was if you don't have an actual millage increase, you don't have to do all this stuff. You know, this, but like a lot of bills in the House, it kinda stalled. You know, we got an interesting House situation. New Speaker, New Speaker Pro K, lots of, you know, lots of uncertainties in the House that just kinda stalled, it didn't make it. Hopefully, they can get together and, and look at it again this year. I think the intent of the law was good, but it confuses taxpayers more than it does educates them, I mean, it really does.
Well, it does because now we're still gonna advertise an increase of what's.
An increase.
Yeah, but that, well, that PT thirty-two.
Right. Will you go to that pay trustee? The PT thirty-two, yeah.
Yeah.
For sixteen point two.
Sixteen two, yeah.
Four point two.
Yeah.
Four point two.
That's right.
Yeah, they need to relook at that this year, that would be, that would be helpful for us.
Yeah, it's so confusing. You guys remember last year in her election, Commissioner Karwaki did an excellent advertisement explaining it very thoroughly and broke it down mathematically and very logically. And a lot of people appreciated that and understood it because there was a lot of strange information going around out there. But the bottom line is if you have a homestead exemption on your property and the military, your tax will not go up at all, not one penny. And that, that's the bottom line, the people don't forget.
Even if the state is the highest rate of sixteen.
That's correct.
If you're homesteaded, we wouldn't see it.
That's correct.
That's correct.
If they, if they reduce it to sixteen point two, you're gonna have a lower tax bill.
Well, you say, you should advertise at the highest?
Well, not, well, there's a, there's a pitfall to that too because you gotta advertise that tax increase. Well, not, well, there's a, there's a pitfall to that too, cause you gotta advertise that tax increase.
Right.
So, people see that and go, what, oh my.
And that was what, like, seven?
Even though you're not increasing it, people get confused.
Yeah, nine.
It's nine, that's right. Yeah, exactly right. This is act, to leave the millage rate exactly the same, you have to advertise like it's an increase. And it's a quirk of the law, yeah, it's a.
Well, it's very confusing, it's very confusing.
Very confusing, oh.
It is. I've never understood why we have to do that.
And, you know, the rollback rate doesn't take into account how the personal property, um, timber, as you can see, has dropped. Um, all, heavy equipment's dropped, motor vehicles, all those values that were traditionally collected by counties and school districts, their values have gone to almost nothing.
Right.
And that's not calculated in the rollback rate calculation, so you don't get credit for those tax bases diminishing. So, I mean, it's, it's not a good law, it's just, it's not, I think the intent was really good, and it just hadn't worked out that way, you know?
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All right, so if we put it in the paper on eight sixteen, we have to have a week, is that right, Tammy? We didn't talk about these dates today. So, that would be on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, and on Thursday, the thirty-first. She had to put five days between the two hearings, or two hearing dates. And we have to do, one has to be after six o'clock, or six o'clock or after. And then the other two can be anytime, and you can do two in one day, I think y'all have done that before too.
Yes.
We've come one morning and come one, I mean.
I won't be here on the twenty-fourth, I'm gonna be out of town. I could do the Friday, and I know we don't like to meet on Fridays, but, but the twenty, I mean, for this, yeah.
Do one in the morning?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, really?
Go to the river afterward, Sandy.
It's gonna rain that day, sorry.
Come on, man.
So, the twenty-fifth.
Okay, the twenty-fifth, what time would y'all like that one?
I'm good whenever. Already messed up the Thursday, so Friday will be.
And the thirty-first, I won't be here.
I'll have my calendar. That's smack and rest.
I can be here, but I have to be anywhere by.
What time, y'all?
All right, so, the first one is gonna be on the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Okay. I'm good, I mean, we can do a morning, if y'all good with mornings?
Let's do a nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Let's go with y'all.
Works for me.
And then it has to be at least five business days.
After.
So, we're gonna have to go till?
September first?
No.
One.
Yeah, you're right, five business days, so.
Oh, we might, could just do it on the seventh, September seventh?
I was gonna say, can't we do that then?
Richie, do you know?
I, I think it is, yeah. I don't think you'll see the county enact theirs, just remember, we still gotta get it on county commission agenda. We're, we're, we're recommending authority, so we've got, still gotta get it on their agenda to adopt it for us.
On the seventh?
I anticipate theirs will be at their September meeting, based on the conversation I have with the county manager today.
Well, we could do the sixth and seventh, or we can do two on the seventh.
Either way.
All right, then I'm fine, y'all, I don't have my, I can't get in my calendar.
August twenty-fifth.
August twenty-fifth is at nine AM. And then we'll do the other one on nine, we'll do one on nine, seven, and we'll do it right, just before the board meeting, like, do it first?
Yeah, there you go.
Do it at six and then go into the board meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Or even five thirty, and then go straight in, you know what I mean? Oh, no, you gotta do it at six.
No, one has to be at six.
That's the one we're gonna do at six, yeah, yeah.
So, we're gonna do the first one, what time?
At nine in the morning?
Nine in the morning.
The twenty-fifth.
Are we gonna do two on the seventh?
Yeah, you should be doing two on the seventh.
Okay, so you want one in the morning, you want it at nine again, or do you want it?
Yeah, I think nine works. You know, I had one sitting, I'm not gonna name his name, but.
Or we can, we could do.
Yeah, the statute actually reads between six and seven, so he starts his at six oh one. But, I'm, not to split hairs, I'm not gonna name the city manager, but he does do it. Not me, it's not me either. Might be over in Heisman, but, you know. But that's how the statute reads, between six and seven, so.
Uh, we can't, we couldn't have one at five thirty and then at six, right?
No, if, if you have them on the same day, it has to be, if, if.
A morning and afternoon.
The other one has to be before twelve and.
Correct, so do eleven?
Eleven and six.
Or you wanna do?
Well, I mean, that's, why can't we do it at like ten till twelve, I mean, Galen and Fred work, some of us work.
Us. I've worked.
I said Galen and Fred, okay, Fred, 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 whatever.
I can be here anytime, yeah, I mean, yeah. Long as I boss approved.
So, you said before noon, so.
Yeah, we're doing one at six o'clock that day, we have to do it before noon.
All right, y'all, so let's go ahead.
Can we do it at nine, like the other one?
Let's do it at nine.
Okay.
Yes, nine o'clock it is.
Nine AM and six PM.
But, no. So, August the twenty-fifth at nine AM, September the seventh at nine AM and six PM.
Okay.
Does that work, Tammy?
And now, once Catherine runs these, we are not gonna be able to change the dates. So, we've got to stick with these dates.
Oh, well, we, it's in there.
Mr. Wilson, you said eight sixteen was what, that's when you were gonna advertise?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you gotta have that five business days apart, so you're gonna have to have it at least twice. And that's a DOR rule, it's not in the statute, that's a DOR rule.
Okay.
So, it'll be advertised for two weeks.
Everybody's putting it in their calendar right now.
That gives us plenty of time, something comes up personally, we change it, so that.
I can send y'all an invite if that works better.
No, it's fine, I just wanna put it in here, that way I have it.
I know, I'll be back, my grandson is due on the twenty-fourth of August, I hope he come before then.
Bring him with you.
Bring him with you, listen to her.
Yeah, will do.
Just bring him with you, okay.
Uh, enough tax discussion?
Yes.
Cause we love that discussion every year, right?
Yeah.
All right, Tammy, financials.
I started for that July thirty-first, page two, the general operating account. We began the month with one point eight million, we had receipts of one point one million and dispersments of one point eight million, leaving us with one point one million in the general operating account. Uh, revenue and expenses, revenues on page twenty-five, uh, with everything coming in in July, being accrued, still being accrued in FY twenty-three, we had a hundred and eighty-five thousand in, uh, general fund receipts for, uh, the month of July, which is just barely one percent of our budgeted seventeen point eight million in revenues. Onto expenses, on page twenty-seven, we had posted expenses of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, which is three point nine five percent of the budgeted eighteen point four million in, uh, general fund expenditures, expenditures. Changes in fund to equity, uh, page thirty-one, we have ending fund balance in the general fund of three point three million. Okay, onto school nutrition, page a hundred and ten, uh, she, there is four hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine in the, uh, school nutrition operating account. And there is a fund balance in the, on page one seventeen, I'm sorry. Uh, fund balance for the school nutrition account is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Local projects, just over two million in the local projects account. Money market account, just over three million, which, that is our fund, general fund fund balance. Um, hence, uh, will be the request to move a million dollars into the general operating account. And finally, the debt service fund, Georgia Fund One, uh, we began the month with two point eight. Uh, we had twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-three in interest. East Plus receipts for July, a hundred and eighty-one thousand, leaving us with just over three million in the Georgia Fund One account. Uh, July, um, East Plus receipts are up twelve point three percent from July of twenty twenty-two. And for the fiscal year twenty-three, we averaged a ten percent growth in the East Plus revenues.
Yeah.
Wow.
That should continue to improve.
People are traveling, cause we don't have any new building, I mean, we don't have any new businesses out there.
Oh, yes, we do.
Out on the interstate?
Right by, look at that Shell station, the new friendly.
Oh, yes.
Jam, Pat.
Every time you come by.
People are traveling, but we don't have a whole lot of new businesses on the interstate.
And that one is new, and it is crushing it.
Yeah.
Right by there, it was sixteen pumps, I think.
Yeah.
And they staple.
Been open for four months, it's having a noticeable impact on Shell's, no doubt about it, it is.
Yeah.
You gotta check that out.
Stay pat.
And their prices are very competitive too.
They are, that's correct. And they've got a milkshake machine.
What'd you say?
Already cost me a lot of money.
A milkshake machine.
Tammy, you wanna talk about seven and eight, the transfers?
Okay. So, uh, the energy lease payment is coming due on nine one, so I'm asking for a transfer out of the Georgia Fund One, the East Plus account, into the general operating account of five hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-five cents to make that, um, payment that's due on nine one. And, uh, like I said earlier, I'm transferring, I'm asking the board to transfer a million dollars from the money market account into the general operating account. Get us through, till the tax revenue starts opening again.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Moss? All right, Mr. Ben, you wanna talk about the upgrades into the lighting and sound auditorium?
Sure, so, um, attached on there is the first phase of the quotes for upgrading the lighting, specifically at this point in auditorium, I can pull that up, if you guys would like to see it, but it is fifty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars, and this is phase one, we do have a budget set of around a hundred thousand dollars, I believe, in the panel that I drew for upgrading the lighting and sound. Um, in the auditorium, there is, in addition to this, there are some power changes that have to happen, um, as well as sound changes, we will, we will be responsible for renting the lift and a few other things in there. And right now, it looks like we will stay within our hundred thousand dollar budget, and if anything changes on that, but we did wanna go ahead and get this on here to get the, all of the lights and everything on order, so we can get this project going with.
Who's doing this, Scott?
This one is Jacksonville, uh, lighting and sound, we did get quotes from a couple other companies, one of them, um, was significantly higher. Did you want me to put back on that?
Yeah, if you would, please.
Um, I've had Ms. Lovin, who uses the auditorium the most, go through everything, and, um, this is, uh, like I said, one of the companies that we talked about out of Jacksonville, and, um, seemed to know what they're doing with that lighting panel that's in there that I do not understand, to be honest, but, um, out of all the companies we talked to, one of them didn't have a clue about the lighting panel, so it helps me to rule out, and the other one was twice the money.
So, is this lighting and sound?
This one is just lighting.
Just lighting.
Yeah, so, we are looking at doing the soundboard, right now, the initial quote on it is, I believe, around five thousand dollars for the, the soundboard. All of our speakers have been tested, and they said everything else is good, so, it doesn't look like we're gonna have any expensive expense on the sound side. Everything's coming down to the lighting, that panel's, like, eighteen years old, I think, so they're gonna, they're, so they're gonna have to bring a power pump, an electrician into de-wire the specific panels that's in there, put, save the breaker panels back in there, and then converting everything, the color-changing LED lights, um, cause that's what we want in an auditorium, so they don't have to use all the GL packets or any of that stuff anymore, where they're walking on the catwalk and changing all that, the GL sound, that will go away. Every bit of this will be color-changing by the press of a button.
Now, is that for the whole auditorium or just a stage?
No, so, that's part of what's not in this quote, is the house lights, because all the house lights tie back into the same system. And actually, Jacksonville Lighting has another company coming in to look at the house lights specifically, because of the way they tie back into the lighting panel. Um, but we're still waiting on that component, I just didn't wanna slow down the progress on this, uh, because they said it is a thirty to sixty day wait on just ordering components, and we do have some events coming up later this year.
Did you say the house lights?
Are not in this.
Not, that'd be another quote.
Yes, that, we're probably looking at around twenty thousand dollars in that. As of right now, we're looking at, um, I don't know how much the power stop's gonna be, probably another twenty thousand dollars in house light. And like I said, as of right now, we're still within the hundred thousand dollar budget that's planned for that. Do you guys have any other questions on that?
I'm good.
We're just trying to get started, because she has region, one act play, I have to think what that word, one act play, coming up. End of October. All right, Mr. Moss, surplus and facilities, intruder drill.
Great evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I tried to group all your stuff right there together.
In the Oak Grove, um, wing that we've capped, we have a bunch of the old cafeteria tables that came out of the old cafeteria. When we, um, moved to the new one, we got a, um, donation from Gleng County, nicer tables. And so, we've got really nice tables in the new cafeteria inside the gym, inside the building. So, the whole hallway is full of these old tables that we really don't have much to do for, so we're requesting that we surplus those. I'll run an ad in the paper for two weeks, and then we'll take some sealed bids on those. As well as a, um, Big Dog Zero Turn mower, Big Dog has gone out of, um, business, they're no longer with us, and all of our mowers are Husqvarna, so we're buying all of our blades at the, all the same mower, we're buying our blades, buying our belts and everything for that mower, and this mower has been sitting for two years. Um, it's got a hydraulic leak in it, that it just leaks out all the hydraulic fluid in the zero turn portion of it. So, it's just, um, taking up space in our, our, um, warehouse there, so we'd like to surplus that. Um, so we'll be seeking approval for that next week. Facilities and operations, update on project. Rusty, if you'll pull up that first video, I'm really, really, that, that'll be the one of the Oak Grove. If you'll take a look at this, this is Oak Grove, the fence has started to come down, you, all you'll see the poles there, they'll be gone here tomorrow. Um, the grass is growing in, even though there's some of that white area, it'll, it will eventually feed in. There's a new sprinkler system where the new area has already been installed, all sprinklers, and it's been hydro seeded, so we're, we're really excited about looking, um, that's starting to turn green. And if you look here, that's the main project right here that's still left to do, is that wall. We got our first quote on that, and it was pretty pricey, so we are obviously going for a second quote on, um, that wall. The intention is to stucco the front of it, um, with a little, a tabby type, um, stucco, and, um, we'll go all the way across, and then, just like the front office, or, you'll see, it has a little overhang and two panels. Rusty, if you'll pan over to what it looks like in, right in front of the office for me, right there, you see how it jets out? They'll be the same style in front of the double glass doors, if you'll pan back for me, Rusty, I appreciate your help on that. Right in front of those doors, it'll also be an overhang and two pole, um, pilings that come down, and then an awning that will go all the way down for handicap. And then, one more time for me, um, Rusty, if you'll go back to the, the front of it. From those stairs, coming out will be a nice winding, um, kind of a, a snaking, um, pathway, and in the middle of it will be a circle, kinda like in the high school, with a flagpole coming right up there. So, you'll be able to walk right up to the, um, stairs of the front office right from that parking lot, as well as if you're i- in a situation that needed, the rain was coming, you'd be able to walk down right beside the building, under an awning. So, we're looking at quotes, we're hope, we were, I was praying that it would be in for this board meeting, but, um, possibly, if you'll look at and accept it, that if we have it in by the next board meeting, we'll get it to you as soon as possible. Um, a local company is putting in a bid, and I think it will be, um, something well within our, our budget, um, for that, completing that project. Um, a local company is putting in a bid, and I think it will be, um, something well within our, our budget, um, for that, completing that project. But man, it's really looking nice, I think that it's, um, absolutely beautiful, and when that grass starts growing in, and that walkway, and then, uh, a flagpole right there, we're gonna have a real Old Thorpe Square that the community can enjoy, and our students and faculty will be able to enjoy.
It was very nice today to look out from Katie's area and see the road, not see the building.
And the next video is, um, also gonna be kinda what you'll see for our awning at the, um, on the other side, from the building all the way down. There's an existing awning there, we'll take that all the way down, and we'll put this. This is for the bus loop, now our students have an opportunity to go out to the buses and be able to stand undercover and, and be protected, and, um, uh, just a lot safer and a lot neater. If you've ever seen a rainy day dismissal, when they let them out the doors, it's wild. Now, at least you can ha- facilitate them up there, the buses can pull up, just like at Ty Grant, when they have a rainy day schedule. One bus comes up, or two, and they, they get on the bus without, um, a wild run for it, you know, so that, that, that turned out absolutely beautiful.
Mr. Mossel, while, while we're here on this picture, um, a- and talking about the, uh, Oak Grove, dressing that up. Um, a- and I don't know, you said a quote you got was a little pricey, is it the stucco that's pricey? I mean, because I was gonna say, the back of the cafeteria where they panned it, that doesn't look bad. I mean, I thought that was gonna be terrible, but it, I mean, that, maybe that's a, something else you could look at.
Absolutely.
You know?
Uh, w- we're exploring that options, that, um, the one thing that really, um, we were talking about is that is the outside of that building. They were saying that for the water protection, you could paint it with some stuff, but they really thought,
Yeah.
was suggested that it was covered, just like our buildings here, um, and it wa- the pricey of the, the price of the first quote was, I think, um, certain contractors are more expensive than others, and, um, and he also had quoted in, he wanted to do the, a, a tab, and we didn't ask for it, but he put the tabby all the way around the top, just like it, that white strip there. He wanted to brick up the, the bottom, so it would match exactly, and I said, well, that's not kinda what we asked for, we asked for a, a much cleaner look, so, um, they're not gonna build, he was building a wall that went on in front, and it's not gonna be that, it'll be stucco right to the front, that seals that building up. And then, the, the hard part is that you have to have an overhang off, off that building.
Right.
So they're gonna have to build a frame and have that overhang to protect it from, um, the water coming in. But, um, I like, I like your idea, and we can even explore that, we're just looking to see what the price will be
Right.
with the, with the tabby, um, with the stucco, so that's a good option, too. Um, again, we're very, very close on the last little bit, is, um, some lock, um, some electronic locks at the high school for our security wall, and then that will be complete, um, a hundred percent. And, um, the grass at the, on the field is coming in, um, there was a picture that was taken, and it was sent to me, and it looked like there's some burn spots, but I just wanna make everybody aware that that first mowing, every year, even when it was that you're gonna burn that first top off, and after we mowed it, the first good time we let it grow, it's burning, now it's coming back, it's looking really good. I think that we're gonna be prepared for that first game, and it's gonna be awesome. As far as the speakers, um, I was out at open house, and I was in the parking lot walking up, and Russi said that out of all the speakers out there, they were testing four at a time, and it rocked this, the parking lot with four speakers, so I'm really excited about the opportunity to hear the whole full-blown, um, speaker system for our football field. It's gonna be, um, pretty amazing, so that's coming along, um, famously, I can't wait to, to hear that, as well as, we're gonna do some, there was a little snafu with our baseball speakers, where some cones were burnt out. Um, we overdrove them, but we made a, um, provision, the company stepped up to the plate, they covered it, no problem, not on us. And then we put some limiters on there, Russi was smart for asking for some limiters, that it will never be able to, unless they go out of their way, um, hopefully, it'll never be able to be blown again.
Be intentional if it happens.
Yeah, it will, it will be, so, um, our baseball, softball, and our football sound out at the, the high school sports complex is absolutely gonna be one to be reckoned with, for sure. Any question on facilities? Intruder drill, I wanna be kinda vague, but yet still say this, that we appreciate so much our partnership with our local sheriff's department, and all the entities in, um, McIntosh, the E M A, Fire and Rescue, our E M S, all the, all the entities came together. We had, I think, one of the most successful intruder drills, um, that we've had in McIntosh, um, it was really great. It was an experience for everybody involved, and such a learning curve, um, for us all. It's really a big event when you coordinate, uh, police officers in the, the emergency medical and, um, the E M A, everybody coming in. It takes a lot of coordination, and this practice was absolutely wonderful, and not that it was perfect by any means, but what it was, was perfectly able to tell us where we need to even get stronger at. Um, we always say it'll never happen in our town, and I'm banking on that, and it never will, but if it does, I believe that we're more prepared than ever. We will be seeking approval, or a- um, asking for another go at it during the, um, winter break, not when students are there again. We'll do this again, and the drill will, um, be taken to the next level. Again, the sheriff's department and our E M A, Ty Popple, Trexler, Sheriff, um, Steve Jessup, our sheriff, um, absolutely did a great job, and it was so much appreciated, their, their effort, because they, they took it upon themselves, it's for us, but they took it on as their own, and said that we wanna be prepared for you, and that showed a lot for me, and, and I'm very much respectful of that. Covid update, um, we're all gathering back together, and, um, there seems to be just a very, very slight tinge of a, an uptick. We have three active cases, one staff member and two students, not bad, if you remember back in, um, our peak, it was nothing like that. So what I am doing here is for anybody that, um, hears this, is that we still are, um, not just Covid protocols, but general health safety protocols, that we are washing our hands, that we're, um, being conscious, though, if you have a fever, that we're asking you not to come. Twenty-four hours fever-free, as hard it is for teachers to miss this, um, this time, it's better for them to do that than possibly, um, contribute to any kinda spread. So, um, we're conscious of it, I don't see it being an issue, um, just making you aware, and knowing that general health procedures are in effect, and, and still talked about, and, um, expected at this point. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The other things we had under culture and climate was, um, we had our admin retreat, we brought all the principals, assistant principals, academic coaches, and directors together. We had a really good productive day. Um, the system-wide meeting, I think, went really well on Friday, I've had a lot of, um, positive feedback from that. Even today, I got, I got several emails, um, for, about the speaker, so I think Michael did a really good job for us for that.
That's great.
Um, quality work for us, we'll talk about personnel in executive session. And then just community engagement, a- items, uh, the new teacher orientation, just another thank you to the chamber and Darian Telephone for helping us with that. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club met here last Wednesday for their board meeting. Um, Congressman Buddy Carter stopped by, just wanted to know, you know, meet the new superintendent, see if there's anything he could help us with. Open House was a, a success at all three schools, lots of, lots of people at all three schools, it was a good turnout. And then our partnership with our law enforcement for the National Night Out. And that's my report.
Do what?
It was a lot.
Oh, that's good. It was a lot.
It was a lot.
Okay, could I have a motion to go to executive session, only personnel?
Motion.
Real estate.
And real estate?
And real estate.
Motion.
Okay, hold on, okay, motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. We will return. Okay, board had adjourned to executive session, discuss personnel and real estate, could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
McIver.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Okay, five zero. Alright, superintendent recommends personnel report as submitted.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Stragles.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. Board comments, we'll start on this end, if we have any.
Sounds like we've had a great first day throughout the district, and excited about that, looking forward to a great year. That's all I have.
Um, something I should've brought up earlier, and, uh, I just saw my little note here, that I wrote for myself. Um, Dr. Williams, what is the plan for the, um, if there is a plan, for the old, um, technology bus? Because I was approached, approached by, um,
Somebody at the sheriff's office?
Well, I was approached by Frankie Wallace, whatever he is, um,
E M S.
Yeah, and,
Well, we've had it.
So you know all about it.
Well, you wanna talk about what they've talked to you about?
Yes, um, it's a possibility that we're able to partner with the sheriff's department, they've got some trucks, um, and a van possibly, and technology has been wanting, um, needs, a vehicle, because we're transporting technology, that we could, you know, take the seats out and have it, have it for technology, they're driving all over the county, and they're using their own gas, and it's possibly there. And then, um, two additional trucks, we just hired a new gentleman there for the, um,
Maintenance?
Maintenance, and then we have the extra one coming, and then possibly one for C T A E. They're pulling a lot of trailers and, um, doing a lot with their own vehicles, so we could have one at the high school specifically for C T A E, one at the, um, maintenance shop as an extra. They're, they're partnering up now, and then possibly a van. They do have two trucks available, and we might be, have to be patient on the van, um, but they said that possibly, all again, just in the works, just all talk, um,
They wanna know if we were willing to swap it.
Okay, okay.
Swap, do a swap, they wanna use it for a command center.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
I think that, um, they're getting a little bit better of, um, I think, a deal on that, however, because it's, they're gonna be possibly using it to help us, and help our community.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a, a smart trade, um, uh, in, in that category, as our contribution to their efforts, to how much they're gonna respond.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's gonna be a, that what they talked about is a mobile command station, um, it's already wired and, um,
Has a generator?
Generator, they could get in there, and, um, uh, we even discussed that we have a couple of those active boards that are, we're going to end up surplusing. So they have a big screen, they talked about getting wireless, um, their own wireless hub on top of it, and you never know, it might be able to tie into the system. They could have live view on big screens, it could be something pretty special.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, I think for, and we, we still get something out of it, it's been sitting for two years, and we start it up and run it on every month, and keep it going, because you know how things happen when they sit, so.
Yeah.
It would be a great partnership and a great move if it worked out to be that way.
Yeah, he asked me, uh,
I said, let's do it.
Thursday night at the lodge meeting, and I said I would sure check, and, uh,
So, there wouldn't be an issue, because, I'm, I'll just say this, I'm very disappointed that we don't have that anymore, because that was a big hit in the community, I feel like, with the parents, but that's neither here nor there. But there wouldn't be an issue, because grant money paid for that.
Already started the project, you jump through the hoops that you have to go through and take it off your books, and there is some Title One stuff that was used, perched of it, but now we're going on five, six, six or seven years ago, and realistically, five at least, that it was in operation, it's been sitting for two to three years, um, I believe it would use one year. And yes, it was a, a great concept, however, the use of it, when we really looked at and rubbed the numbers out, how many kids were actually using it, um, it just wasn't what we thought. It would've been better if it was a mobile broadband distributor, where you could've put it somewhere, and e- everybody that went around it possibly. But the actual use of it wasn't as, um, what we thought for putting two teachers on there and a driver and going to these places, it wasn't full very much at all. Great concept, and I think in a, maybe a more suburban area or something, we just didn't, we weren't able to get the bang for our buck out of it. But yeah, we'll, we'll do everything appropriate to make sure it's taken off the books, and, um, there's ways to do it, you know, people get rid of things all the time, and we'll jump through the appropriatives for that.
And, and Deverger had approached me about somehow getting a truck for him, for his trailer, and so that was, when he, when we talked about it, I was like, well, that might be a way for us to get him something, too.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And other than that, uh, welcome back. Thank you.
Nothing, Richard?
Yes, it's an exciting year.
Yep, welcome back.
Yes.
Let's do it.
Okay, anything? Alright, we're adjourned.
We've said enough tonight.
Yeah.